Oh! My people via France! I'm here for you! We're here for the Africa people! We're here for the future! For the people who are here! We're here for the common! And we're here for the city! Depp, 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 depp! Oi! Oh jala jala! Boom boom! And I'm here for you! It's on for you! It's here 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 for you! We're here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! We're here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! We're here for the people! If you want to help your people! I'm here to help your people! Now, please! I'm here to help your people! If you want to help your people! I'm here to help your people! Oh, oh! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! We're here for the 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 people! Hello, my friends! I'm here for you! My name is Nani Nono! She's from the village of Nini! I'm here to help my people! I'm here for you! I'm here for you! I'm here to help my people! 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 We're here for the people! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! I'm here to help my 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 people! It's not for you! My people, they're here for you! They're here for you! They're here for you! I'm here for the people! We're here for the people! Islamization! Our souls are here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! I'm here to help my people! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! We're 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 here for the people! Our souls are here for the people! I'm here to help my people! We're here for the people! If you want to help my people! We're here for the people! I'm here to help my people! Our souls are here for the people! We're 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 here for the people! Radio via France! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! Radio via France! We're here for the 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 people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! I'm here to help my people! Radio via France! We're here for the people! Heh heh heh! I know on Radio via France! Who will be here? Are they here for you? They could go for you? They could come? They could come for you? Where are you? Who are you? Beep 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 beep! Oh jala jala! Boom boom! We're here for France! We're here for the people! And I'm here for you! We're here for the people! If you can shake it, you can get it! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! We're here for the people! Get your magazine!
I feel... One family! I feel happy! One family! I feel happy! One family! One family! I feel happy! And we're about to start. Um... Our leader will be arriving any second from now. And I will have just very few... If we are about to take picture or to video, at least you can do that from your seat. We would not like anybody to come in front to interrupt the... the... the video here because we are live on air right now. So... Well, I said all the... via France and friends of via France, even enemies of via France, who were here this very evening, to please... take their seats. Our leader arrives, we are not... he is not allowed to be shaken by anybody. He is not allowed to take picture from anybody by the end of the day. We will have time for all that. And I want to use this very opportunity to salute the courage of the great family member in Nürnberg for this great occasion. Um, it is not easy, as I said before, but we are... via France! We are equal to every tax. That is what each and every one of us will be in mind. I want to use this very opportunity to welcome our dearly sister, Mrs. Nenia, the head of our financial department, Adabia Frakel. Before our leader arrives, I want to use this great opportunity also to salute the courage of Nürnberg coordinator and all our officers in Nürnberg. They have a very hard to make this very occasion what it will be today. So we are... we'll be very calm to listen to the gospel of the year because this very gospel will be going on air, live, Facebook, YouTube, all the social media. They will be seeing you any moment from now. We are... well, hey, one... uh, I think... we're already. So I want to use this very opportunity to welcome the great man, Ahmadike. The man that we have been waiting for since 6:00 AM we arrived here to this very moment. We will be coming in now, any moment from now. You will be seeing him live on this very stage. Not on YouTube again or on Facebook. As I said before, you count yourself as the most blessed human being right from this very evening because Ahmadike is going to deliver a very crucial gospel tonight. And this very message will go beyond the earth. Even Chukwuekabi Amma is listening. So as we are... we are welcoming the great man himself, the big master. The man that the enemy is here, his name and their heartbreak. The man that the enemy is here, his name and their blood pressure will rise beyond control. He will be arriving here now. And you will hear from him. As Ahmadike has said, you people know what the right thing to do. We are going to welcome him in our own way. I didn't know... I didn't know to... for that of what to do. We are via France. I am welcoming the great man. He will be arriving now with his aid. With... you, all of us knows that Ahmadike is not alone. We always accompany him with a very promising via France. His name is Mazijon Ahaneuku. That is the name of our... of the head of our leader. And he is here also this very evening with us. The selected people are here this very evening. I am saying once again, if you can make it today to be here, by one of the selected. Because, um... one of the... they said... Ahmadike. So, uh, the security, please, sir, can you go and inform our leader that via France are waiting? Friends of via France are waiting? Even the many folks of via France that are still waiting? Because the gospel will go everywhere. It will enter to every ear this very evening. My name once again is Chukudotonye. I am serving this very great family as a German national coordinator. And I have nothing to regret about that. I am very, very proud to serve this very family. Ahmadike himself is stepping in.
Holy, holy, holy! Nam de kano! Isa mba da se ya! Holy, holy! Holy, holy, holy! Nam de kano! Isama da se ya! Holy, holy, holy! Nam de kano! Isama da se ya! Holy, holy, holy! Nam de kano! Isama da se ya!
I feel... One family! I feel... One family! I feel... I feel... Please, can we take our seats? Can we go back to our seats, please? Can we go back to our seats? So that we pay appropriate attention to the great gospel? Please, let back to your seats. We don't want people to be walking around. I have said it today. If you want to make it, try to do that from your seat. You don't want to see people standing. Please, please, we don't want to see people standing so that people were... those that were sitting behind with this young Ahmadike. And, um... if you have something to give up this time, this very night. All hail! All hail! Ahmadike! You are highly welcome. You have shown us love, great love indeed. Every minute of the day, you call on us. That makes us very, very special. We are very, very proud of you. May Chukwuekabi Amma bless you, continue to be leading you. Via France, we must get in the name of Chukwuekabi Amma. I welcome each and every one of you here gathered. You have to excuse us because this is a live broadcast. I have to sit down for the duration of my address. Maybe after that, I will stand up. We will switch off all transmission and then I will address you privately. This very program this evening is coming live from here, the city of Nürnberg in Germany, in front of audience that I believe are hardcore. Is that correct?
Yes!
Only in Nürnberg, very in the middle of Germany. It is my pleasure to be here and I'm delighted to be amongst you. You are very lucky here in Nürnberg because I brought with me our deputy as well, Luchemefor is here with me.
I feel... I feel... I feel...
And our sister is also here. Nenia, she's here with us. And, uh... Tonight from here, we shall preach this very gospel. The gospel of truth and redemption. From this very hall this evening, we shall all of us speak the minds of our people. We shall address every issue, concerns, and the importance to the restoration of Via France insofar as it affects us as a group and also as a people. I welcome each and every one of you. As it is customary, we must pray. Before we commence, this is a live presentation. By the way, I will indulge... or should I say? Ask all of you to please switch your phone to vibrate or to silent because the whole world is listening. When we preach this very gospel, humanity comes to attention. Everything we say is gospel. When we preach it, it resonates amongst those who are of good conscience. And ultimately, as you well know, the zoo must fall. There is nothing anybody can do about it. The zoo will fall eventually. This evening, we are going to pray in two phases. Is there any title person here? We pray in the name of Chukwuekabi Amma, always, as you well know, because the restoration of Via France is spiritual and not temporal. It is in the gift of him to give that to us. Is there anybody who is titled who is here? Who is traditional? Okwari ngalabeke mean proper tradition. Please come forward and give my microphone. I want him to pray for us.
All hail Via France!
All hail Via France!
Akabia France! Akabia France! Akabia France! I'm getting you. Getting you, Amma. Getting you, Igo. I go ahead, Jemba. Getting you. Getting you, Okuzo. I will get you. Tomo mba la, tomu yoz. Bobi, Igo. Via France, get him on. Via France, get him on. Chukwuekabi Amma. Ay, eduhae. Eduhae, Udo. Amma, yeah, getting, getting. Nah, Vegas, nah, get here. Make it no, no. I will look on the letter. No. Asher, Asher. The other me. I can never hang it. Adam, Adam, Oh, Via France. I can never hang it. Connecto, I will connecto. Nuremberg. I can never hang it. Bobby, Igo. Via France, IPOB. Bonya, Bonya, Sis. Koresi. Chukwuekabi Amma, Elma, Yuma. Bobby, Igo. I'm not Via France. I'm in the... 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 Chukwuekabi Amma. Erohim, Erohim. Bigo. Bigo. Chukwuekabi Amma. I'm in the... I'm in the... I'm in the... This is the one I'm making. I'm here. I'm here. I'm going on. Yeah, I'm going to... I'm making that. I'm making it. Bigo. I'm in the... I'm in the... I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. Dubai. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. Chukwuekabi, Chukwuekabi. I'm here, Iyo. I'm here, Igo. I'm not Via France. Bigo. I'm going on. I'm here, I'm in the... I'm not God! I'm not! I'm not, Iyo. Tomo. Tomo mba mba. See, I'm sure. See, I'm glad you're not going to go. You're not going to go. I'm going to go. Two of us. I just see you. Yeah. I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, Iyo. I'm not! God! Yogi! Fire! Fire! Arrow! 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 Arrow, arrow, arrow. I'm getting you. Boom! Bigo. I'm in the... Getting you. I'm in the... I'm in the... I'm in the... I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm going to go. I'm here. I'm going to go. Bigo. I'm here. I'm here. Oh! I'm going to go. I'm here. I'm here. I'm going to go. I'm here. I'm here. Erohim. I'm not, Iyo. Chukwuekabi Amma. I'm here. I'm here. Tata. I'm here. I'm here. I'm not Chukwuekabi Amma. I'm going to go. Our honourable leader. I'm here. 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 I'm here.[1443.24] Losotia. Uchare mofo. N'ada biyafra. Andiozo. Na no reva. Umunu na ndidan reva, ndina ebba. Ayenana. Klikilaya, yesu na ndiroba. N'ani, n'ani, n'ani. N'ani chen duan chen bo niina. Ayenana benalani, oka, na yu kobeama. Koda na benalani. Oyaba reba, beno romo. Maiwa akolomo ya. Akosha lomo, omu akolomo. Akoku ku. Amalike. Ne ku buku. De retun, de jujushun. Oyama mota. Amalaka mesu, ngeno. Mwani. Mwazi no. Mana. Oyaba na kavaro kama mota. Seno yaya akon, ayaya akon ibanu. Biko. Enkelewa mon. Amalike, aga. Enkelewa ngani? Enkelewa mambala. Allo.
Abobiyafra. Oni Chris. Allo.
IPOB, ne mura ba. IPOB, ne mura ba. Idios people of the Africa. Led by Supreme Leader Mathi Muntikaro. Amalike. Chukuku kama no roku.
I had wanted to sit down, but it seems to me that I may have to stand after all. I came to Germany on a very special assignment which I completed this morning. And I said that we use that very opportunity to see some of you, especially those in Europe. They hara call, not everybody. That's what I said. So we can sit down and talk. Amamo. Ebra wa nani, 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 nani. Apachama, apachama. Uh. Abobonuna. You have spirit to understand what he's doing. For me, I was in the spirit of honor for you. Our enemies have come. After they welcome. When they're not raping our mothers in the farms, or raping our sisters, or abducting us on the streets. They are killing us at their checkpoints. And you know why they are killing us? They are killing us because they want to destroy our morale. They. They. Then. In years gone by. Now they have come. To rape. And they are counting on one thing to succeed. That they will demoralize IPOB. That they will keep arresting and killing. With the help of Dave O'Maher and all the rest of them. Until we get tired. Until we give up. Then Fulanu will march into our land. The same thing they did to our people. They want to do to us. They think we are cowards. They think we cannot stand and defend our land. And that is why I make this promise today, as always make. And as I did from the beginning. Before chukuku kobeama in heaven and men on this earth. That I will return to biyafra land and I will lead this same army. Until our land is free. The work we are doing. Some of you may not understand it. It may be too complex. Or should I say too spiritual? For the kind of mind to appreciate. But I'm sure some of you can see. Even when it's dark. That is why if you can see very clearly, you will understand where we are going to. We only have one destination. And that destination is biyafra. Nothing is going to stop it. My happiness is that our friends, the Eurobass. They are now waking up. That thing you juku saw over fifty years ago. That thing that we are recoming today. They have woken up. They now know that the Fulanis do not mean well for anybody at all. And if they don't take time or rise up. They think we'll be consumed as I told them. I said to the Eurobass, that an achievement will come. Did I not say that? It will come. It's a good thing they have, or should I say. Elohim has raised somebody for them. To fight their battles. I read some comments where. Some misguided and very foolish people. Were laughing at the fact that. Shoray. Have been arrested. And that. In a very brief moment, they captured everything that is wrong with us as a people. Shoray went in. Immortal. Did they reason he will live as an immortal? And then. They were for him. They are the type of people that we need. In order for us to be able to establish. One very simple fact, that every oppressed people, every oppressed person has the right to be free. Only if you want it. Only if you want it. When you protest, the democracy they arrest you. All of you are in Germany, is that correct? Have you seen people protest in Germany before? Have you seen people protest in Germany before? Did the German police arrest them? Did the German police shoot at them? Oh, police protesters. Do you see what was in the zoo? When you protest, they kill you. Who doing the killing now? Who was in? They. Between the. The. They're trying to incite civil strife and rage. But Bouharé, before he died. Also said that if they lose the elections, that many of these are abused. Will you? But you see how they operate in the zoo. That. Because it is a land filled with hypocrites. Illiterate, biased hypocrites. Of them. As well. Before I came here. My friend went to a program on AIT, is that correct? Fanekaide was with AIT this morning, is that correct? And he said. He said. Analyst. Problem in this country. He told her face. Because she was trying to justify the unjustifiable. Here we are in Germany. The key to get American visa is from here to Munich and back. People are struggling to go, to come over here to Europe. People are struggling to live or to seek a better life in America. But in America, before they became what they are today, they protested. They fought a war of independence. They even fought a war to free black slaves in America. What? It. To make us better. Do you know why we want freedom? Is it so that our kids can go to decent schools, so that we can have electricity? So we can have good roads? Is that our product? Is that why we are agitating? Are we agitating because we hate anybody? Is our agitation for freedom born out of hatred? Is because things are not. In.
Biafra. And I still need to preach this very gospel. And I said to those pastors that something great is coming. Has he not come? Oh, they don't know. You didn't start to go for the gospel or do for his people. He said he's forbing forest guard. They're gonna change anymore here, forest. That is not just funny. And he said that DSS will be in charge of the recruitment. When I go to Africa, DSS will be in charge of recruiting you. The same people killing us will recruit us into forest guard. Without guns, without bullets. We are asking me, yet the Allah is a... But... ........................................................................... Some people are busy mocking and supporting evil. Mocking and supporting evil. And I ask some of you here. Do you like the type of life you're living today?
No.
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 Are you happy with it?
No.
Do you think that one day the German people will organize themselves and send you back home? Do you think they will fix Biafra for us?
No.
Do you think they will build your roads for you for free?
No.
Or give you light for free?
No.
It is your responsibility. That is the difference between white people and black people. I don't have time to feel sorry for myself. I'm sure you know that. I'm not one of those sentimentally idiots, so I go back and I start crying and flinch, and I don't do that. If you want your land to be like this, you have to build it yourselves. Who will build it for you? Huh? Our dear brother is dead. And so are many more. And I'm afraid to say that many more will die. Until we wake up all of us one day to realize that Biafra is the only hope we have, not just for we Biafrans, not just for those in West Africa, but for the whole of Africa and beyond. When you see evil happening, you must confront it. They said Wodo is coming here. Is that correct? Who invited him here? Well, and who invited them? Get a hand. Why did Mary invite her? No, I just want to ask a very honest question. If you're one of them, just raise your hand. I have a question to ask. No, they don't understand. That's all. Is it he is a defeat of his people?
No.
What are they doing to him? I want to understand. We cannot be fighting and dying for a Biafra that will contain all of us. And some of you will go behind our back to be inviting people responsible for the death of those fighting for survival. Oh, what did you say? They... Then I can't hear on the other side. Is it not the same thing? Is it not the same thing? Something is not only when you serve the zoo. Somebody came and killed your people. In their thousands. They refused to condemn full-on hates men. They took call for the burning of Madan near Tiala. And you are inviting such a person. And you want us to go on fighting and dying so that he can come home to Biafra land to lead a good life. Is that fair? Is that fair? All sinahna wa wia bia ba. KTM, but I want to see. Let him come here now. It's not possible. Because if you don't have conscience to understand that this man works against IPOB. Because we said no to elections in the zoo. And those who are doing revolution now, I asked them this question. If they had boycotted the election, do you think we'll be having all these useless debates now? Huh? We told them if you vote, it's meaningless. They said we are war mongering. It's speech. Why are you voting or allowing a dictator to rig himself into office and then you come back and start to protest? The greatest protest would have been for you to boycott the elections, straight away. But they didn't let us rest. So we had to show them that voting is basically null and void. Do you know what Oshomole said? Do you know what he said? That Showele should not have contested now. Is that not what he said? Is that what he said? Ah. But we told them not to vote. There is nothing good about Nigeria. There is nothing good about the zoo. But they won't listen. Ose abab, nyo se abap. You people don't listen. Those involved in the invitation of Wodo to this place, you have no conscience. You have no soul. You are wicked and you're evil. Because of money, one chong chego or maybe connection, you want to give your card out of your mama market. Okay, same way security contract or cleaning contract. I want you to understand the depth of your wickedness and shallowness. We here, Maggie here. You have no morals. You have no scruples. And you have no conscience. How can you invite a man that said he sabotaged Biafra before? He will sabotage Biafra again. They see Abia, good Naji. They're killing... Who not born on their policy, right back? Look at all her policing. I am asking you, email me. What are you celebrating? Is it your ignorance that you're celebrating? What are you celebrating? Do you see our problem? I'll walk in the Britain, the journey, wonderful, and I want to save. Do you see how you're holding yourselves down? I have been saying this all the time. Shegevra came to Africa to fight in the Congo. After a while, he left. They asked him, you know Shegevra, don't you? You know him? You know him very well from Bolivia. He fought with Fidel Castro for the mission of Cuba and in Guatemala and a few places in Latin America. He left Congo after a while. They asked him why. He said because a black man do not understand what freedom is all about. He will always put the need of the stomach over and above his self-preservation as a human being. That he cannot fight with such people. In a poor mood, Elleganya, one or two senators, yes, to come. The same people responsible for the mess you're in. Better I go, 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 I go on. Now Jim Milok, come over there with that bad one, drop A G C A, I become. One of my own, tropa. One of my own. They care about a program on the... We're not going on tropa. IPOB. Do you want Biafra?
Yes.
Do you want Biafra?
Yes.
Then why are you inviting Wodo? What has it got to do with Biafra? Huh? No, I want to understand the reason or the justification for inviting them. Nobody can tell me. Have they said anything regarding the small boy that was killed? Have they said anything?
No.
I was told today the issue, the statement calling for Showele's release. Is that correct? Did you read it? Did anybody hear it? Oh, that is fake news. No, no, I'm saying, did you read Orhanese's statement? You have not? Maybe it's fake news. These are the people who are killing you. And you intend to invite them. You have not asked them what they are doing back home regarding the menace that the foreigners are posing in our land. The death that they are causing in our land. But they are junketing and gallivanting all over the place without a single solution. Had they not moved against IPOB or called Operation Pathon Dance against IPOB, foreigners would not have the temerit to come into our land. So you don't know that. Because anytime you're divided now, the enemy will come in. Don't you know that? And that was exactly what they did. And some of you are inviting them. In a country of impunity upon impunity, we have had before to speak up against the evil happening to us. And some of you are helping with them for what? To serve what purpose? What are you looking for? You don't have in Germany. What else are you looking for? In moment, do you want to have a head you have for? Perhaps they are seeking relevance. They want to belong. They want to be seen that they know Orhanese. And by the way, Wodo is living in December, you know that? His tenure comes to an end in December, don't you know that? Oh, you don't know? Oh? His tenure comes to an end in December. And to be the turn of him will stay to produce the next Orhanese president. I'm telling you that, maybe Okrauza will come and run for it. And then some of you here will invite him to come to Numbak for Eulij, for twenty twenty. Our land is under siege. Monumental siege. If you keep quiet, our mothers will be raped. Our WhatsApp people did exactly what some of us are doing today. You know what I was did? Do you know what they did? In eighteen oh four, eighteen oh five. Oh, they said, uh, they are fighting corruption. That the Fulanis will help them to get rid of their corrupt leaders. And we are there today. They are not relevant. They came and they arrested, what's his name? Is it Maurice Wu? Maurice Wu, when was he the INEC president? How many years, how many decades ago? They come for him. They are alleging he committed one point two billion naira fraud. They went to court. The court set his bail bond at one billion naira. Do you know the man called Ibrahim Lamode? You can't disagree, come. Some of you may be surprised. But do you know there is no Igbo millionaire in dollars? Do you know that? Uh, they don't know. We don't have, do you know any, do you know any, uh, in, in, in dollars? Do you know anybody? Eh? Oh, yeah, but they goes to four by four, so now I want to go. Take a hand, four by four. Maybe, probably from, imported from Germany. Do you know those that have the money in the zoo? On the Fulani, this money. And the money belongs to you and I. All the way from Ramandala, Beijing. To Okwa. To Ndani. To Aquate. Oil and gas. Belongs to us. But when they come to your village, they pick one person up. And give him three thousand five hundred. Take him to Abuja. And tell him from today, your title is Archosho. You're now an Igbo leader. Oh, but one, chong chong changing, I wanna, I, ah. Oh, oh, but, ah, but, ah, oh, come, ah, but, ah, my, can you, could, could, ah?
You know what the person said to me? That if they want to bring me out from here, she'll say no. Yes. I was driven from DSS to court. Saudi came to me at the height of our protest for my release. And said to me, if they ask you to leave here today, tell them no. I looked and I said, why? You're not on my side though. That's a gun that the zoo will capitulate. I thought he was joking. The next day, Bassan just said, an Igbo man should be the next president to pacify us. But Wunegu said the same thing. But those people you're inviting to come here for Yigbi, you know what they did? You know what they did? They went behind and said, what can you give me? My daughter just graduated from a university, what can you give her, please? They came out and they condemned. Even people are stopping traffic. Our economy is this, economy is that. But now the foreign agents are killing you. Why can't you talk about economy anymore? They destroyed it. Oh my, this people, this, they are the usual. Had they supported IPOB at that time, the zoo will come and invoke what is called doctrine of necessity. They will sign it and say, please, come 2019 presidency is yours, whatever I want, you can do with it. The same thing that are going back and saying, oh, any Ibo man that wants to vie for presidency in 2092, uh, uh, start now to build alliance. You are the ones destroying every opportunity you have had to move forward. But it cannot happen without IPOB, you know? It's, you know, it can't happen. Because we are going to be free. And there is nothing anybody can do about it. Understand where we are going to. Some of you don't know. Eh, I'm a minority, they said, not last long. After a while, they will disappear. That eh, eh, he's looking for relevance. They, who, who, why you don't look for relevance? Eh, they want to take me home. Who know, he want to be popular. Eh, Miss Kras, we, Miss Kras Amaka. Yes. Yes. But we are still here today. Fighting for what we know to be right. Because men died and women trying to protect the ideal that IPOB has become. And the only way we can say thank you to them for laying down their lives for this very movement is to restore Biafra. No other way. Who we are to acknowledge, they can do so, we are not like anybody you've seen before. We are not. And you will not see anybody like us ever again. This is once in a lifetime opportunity to restore Biafra. We are asking for Biafra to be restored because those in the zoo called Nigeria, they are all evil people. Maybe not all of them. But those are the harm of affairs. When Jonathan was in power, they called for protest. People came up and said protest. Nobody arrested them. Were they arrested? But when you do the same thing when they are there, they arrest you. Everybody is a terrorist apart from Fulani headsman. And you keep quiet. You know, the US government is very clever. You know what they said? It is for Nigerians. It is for Nigerians to deal with the problems of Nigeria. It's not for them. If you think that somebody from abroad will come and tell you, oh, this is Jibril. He shouldn't be there, then you're dreaming. How many of you here knows that Bukhari is dead? Eh? It was when they convinced all of you that that thing there in Nasirouk is Bukhari, that they realized how foolish an average Nigerian is. And that is why their headsmen can keep impunity and not, not to happen to them. Has any headsman been prosecuted? Arrested? The one they arrested in Taraba. They killed the policeman that arrested them and set him free. And they lied and denied and said it was a mistake. Not all 24 hours, the same thing happened in Edo State, do you know that? In Edo? Vigilante in Edo. They killed the vigilantes and then released the headsman. And some of you are still saying, I'm a proud Nigerian, I'm proud to be a Nigerian. Don't tell anyone, you're not. You don't know what you want. You're not serious. So when we say that we are being insulted. You know they are killing blacks in America. You know why they are killing them in America? Are you aware of that? Do you know why they are killing them? Because of what is happening in Africa, especially the zoo. They know that we can't, we're born and used to work. That's why they can kill us. If your so-called government can kill you, and they will bring it and brought their light, go and connive with judges. A judge in a court of law, a judge. Before you bring somebody before a judge, you must have at least rudimentary evidence. As you were, they can catch him and he's going home. And say, you're a terrorist. And go to a court to obtain what is called expat motion or whatever, or judgment. You know what it means? You and I have a problem. I run to a judge. Instead of the judge to say, oh, who do you have this case with? There is a saying where we come from, I don't know for some people. Many of them don't know Zige. There's a saying where we come from. Now, I'm not gonna be, Olu. Now understand why I want to leave the zoo. We are natural justice dictates that you must hear from both parties before you rule. The Saudi who says she has behaved in law is a judge, has been doing this and that, and the elite can go and decide on a case brought by one, one, uh, a local from somewhere. And you're not there. They obtain permission to detain you for 45 days. And you ask the judge, but what did this person do? The judge turned around and said, what I'm just giving you is, um, is a appetizer. If you want to detain him more, come back, I'll give you more time to detain him. But what did this man do? Oh, he called for revolution to do what? What is the agreement? Oh, he wants to protest, but did you not protest five years ago? But that doesn't matter. They have pocketed everybody. Including some of us, our common sense. That is why Fulani headsmen are everywhere. They kill us and they run to their police barracks. They kill us, they run to their army barracks. And I have told them. Today is about the second, I think the army has responded to what we said yesterday. That okay, Zibaz is lying. Every checkpoint in Biafra land must go. Every checkpoint. If they don't go, we compel them to go. You cannot tell me that in the north where there is Boko Haram, Meheti Allah, Fulani headsmen, bandit, there are no roadblocks. No checkpoints. But in Biafra land, every kilometer is a checkpoint. You say you won't give them money and they kill you. All we do is we carry you, we say, we no go Grio, we no go Grie, and we bury you. And then that's it. And we're to continue. It can't happen now. They must leave our land. The same way that you're inviting to come here to eat Yigbi with you. One of the planks of his campaign when he was running for Hennessey, he said, I will fight to dismantle the checkpoints in Ibo land. Is that what he said? The only thing he will be remembered for is sabotaging Biafra. Is that the type of life you want to live? Is that the type of country you want to belong to? That is why the death of Chimobi can never, ever be forgotten. There is always a time, there comes a time in the history of the people when you must say that enough is enough. We cannot be killed in our farms. And then you come out on the road for no reason. A so-called security, whatever nonsense they call it operative, will come and kill one of us. And they go scot-free. It can never happen. And you will make sure that it never happens again by the support that you give to IPOB here in Germany. And by consequence all over the world as well. Because we are not relenting. Some of you may not see a lot of what we are doing. But we are doing quite a lot. I assure you. If you recall the other day, Usibajwa was begging for unity, is that correct? Do you know Usibajwa was begging for unity a few days ago? And only this morning, I took her back and did the same, is that correct? If there is not something threatening the unity of the zoo, would they say what they said? It's common sense, so. If, if nothing is disturbing the zoo, will they say what they said? That tells you that they're doing something. And very soon results. Yes, I will take calls now from people. They have a mic, a mic, the, the speaker here. Have you announced, have we announced the number now? Was the number announced? Maybe we can start from here. There are those here with, yes, let people start. You have to come forward if you have anything to, to ask and then. So do we have anybody who wants to ask question here? You raise your hand and then you'll be called forward to ask. You know, I don't like murmuring. If you have any question to ask, you ask. Anything that is you ask, you'll answer. Uh, please, if you have a question, please step forward, please.
Um, my name is Maaz. Ah, your people, mother. The others, this is for the head of. Please, sir. Um, my question is not really what you said now, but I want to be clear at the base of the 1 million march you call Nassim in America. Is this for only those in America or what I call for me? Or that for us?
It's all over the world. If you can do it in America, please come to America. Because we will do. Yeah? It, it is for everybody. And I want to announce this number for those who may wish to call in to ask questions. It's plus four nine, is that correct? That's the code for Germany. Plus four nine, one, five, one, two, nine, zero, nine, one, nine, four, eight. I repeat, plus four nine, one, five, one, twenty-nine, zero, nine, nineteen, forty-eight. Plus four nine, one, five, one, two, nine, zero, nine, one, nine, four, eight, please. Can you also put that perhaps on, um, on Facebook as well? Does anybody else have a question? I'm sure some of you from here have come to US, is that correct?
Yes.
All in the Africa. All here, Biafra.
Um, my name is Celeste. Um, my question is that, eh, September, UN is having their general meeting in Asimbe. So I want to just know, should we expect to hear anything about Biafra, the case of Biafrans? And the zoo in general, what is happening in zoo? Should we expect to get anything from anybody from there?
Um, thank you very much. I don't know if anybody read or is aware of the UN report that came out. That was about three weeks ago, is that correct? Three weeks ago? It came out? Did you read it? About what situation report in Nigeria? Did any of you read it? You're not aware of it? And I just in the UN, UN, they, they're going to, we're going to. No, UN issued a report to the zoo. And the report was quite explicit. United Nations for the very first time referred to us as people from Biafra region, is that not correct? So what else are you looking for? Now, you're just a sovereign state. So they have to tread very carefully. We are making our case, we're articulating it, and governments around the world are receiving it. And that is why the zoo is under constant pressure. That is why Usibajwa, the vice president, can rise up and say that, pleading for unity, the same man that articulated today. Because something is happening somewhere. We are mounting the pressure everywhere. And when the time comes with UN, you'll be, you will know about it. You don't need to be, you know, ask any questions. Ununga, before the year runs out, Ununga, I'm on here now. Thank you.
Hello? Hello? Yeah, this is, uh, Nicolas, you may.
Yes, Nicolas, go ahead, we are listening, go ahead.
Yeah, Nicolas, you may, calling from Biafra land.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
There's actually. Uh, Nico, I'm going to, no, you may. I, I go again, so, you say, man, I'm not a hero, nah, eh, yeah, eh, Bob, eh, I'm not a hero, eh, I'm a bad eh. I got, the IPOB, eh, where the, this conception, eh, eh, religion. I'm not saying, eh, eh, the churches, eh, I'm a record eh. Yeah, members, eh, I'm not a, eh, eh, Biafra. But I talked to you that in a, some section of the paper, they were this Biafra agitation for a they can hear no something. He here in the in the you but I P O B. If I can't criticize some churches, which he may not have a bunde more than the population, whatever going on in Nigeria, they have the ma- the population. So I believe in Biafra for every religion, free for everybody to practice. Despite nah officially there are Biafa, but it's a religion practiced all over the world. One of the oldest religions. So I can't make a game. I mean, I can't. I have been going to Paris now, guys, on these churches. So can we? She goes to another one. Only one one, they both were near me. Obviously, he get. So I have my own suggestion. I'm not making a game because they want to be cool. I said I take an oath. And he may most of what they did say with this oath to go now. I'm not having a vote that they woke you up. Ah, the Christian, who they give him Bible, where they get oath. I'm not a mom who I got a ete again, it ought to be apart from the Bible. So I don't know how we are being accommodated in taking this oath. Many of us want to come in, but because of our religion, we cannot do that effectively. We are being sidelined. I think I and about that. Can I? Uh, 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 yeah, yeah, man. So only if you get here, I know. You go. Can we? I will never tell you when I dig out all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, my dear brother. Thank you. Call the call. Um. My dear brother, I know he's listening and his intentions are very honorable. I'll try him only a chip. Yes, no, boy. It was if you want to worship. Dog baby, me a dog baby. Car it plastic name bad and tag. In there, I'm not going to carry who go and go on both of the dog baby. If you want to worship dog baby, please go ahead and do so. Oh, yeah, nah. Oh, yeah, nah. For me and my household, we worship Chukokika Biama. Whatever you like, you can worship. That is your business. But regarding taking of oath, you must take it. If you can take oath to serve the zoo, God Nigeria, why won't you take oath to be in Biafra? Because we don't sabotage. We are the largest mass movement in the whole world because we are disciplined, because we are under oath solemnly not to be taken. Then what are you afraid of? When you're in America, you swear allegiance to America. I'm sure before you get German citizenship, you swear allegiance to Germany, don't you? So why won't you swear allegiance to Biafra? That's what it is. You must, because first and foremost, if you practice Judaism, Christianity, oh, nothing, anything you call it. First and foremost, you are a Biafran. And your allegiance lies to Biafra, not to any religion. That is the only way we can build that very land of ours. Religion is a personal business, you and your God. Oh, yeah, that's true. But everybody must be under oath. The same people that are complaining, I don't know the pastors who are being killed by Fani headsman. Do they know if you're under oath or not? Everybody he see they just kill you. Please, Uche, take the next call. Yes, please, go ahead.
Everybody he see they don't kill you.
Hello?
I'm just taking a call.
What? Can you? Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, your name and where you're calling from.
Hello?
Hey.
Yeah. Hello.
But we can hear you very well.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, please. Your name and where you're calling from? I don't got a network in this room. Is he from Germany? I don't know. Please, your name and where you're calling from?
Hello?
Yes, please. Your name and where you're calling from?
Is this here in Biafra?
Yes, it is.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Oh, dear. I wonder if I'm from where?
It is this city in Lagos.
Hey, no wonder now you can't hear me. Don't tell me you gave me my phone.
Hello?
Yes, please, go ahead. We are listening.
Hello?
Hey. Don't tell me you got a phone again. Please, a next call, please, if you may. I forgot to tell them, please, if you're calling, once you call, we pick your call, start speaking because the world is listening, please. The world is listening. Don't wait to hear your voice back again before we proceed. Anybody calling or do we go to the audience here? No calls coming in. I believe the line is jammed, I believe. Any other person here, before we close? Yes, please, give him the microphone.
I'm only kidding.
Thank you. Yes.
This is from and the woman.
Where? Full on this settlement today, I know.
Which documents? So when I fight a man, they have a you don't want to they buy dangerous. We should do now. She might they do. One thing we don't want to do is not because of course. And you get it. See, see, yes, yes. You need to have a hearing. Our time, I'm trying to find our friends. They want to know why I'm not happy. I have a ballet. I'm not gonna catch that. Don't go by. Well, they would tell me. You do. I should have a good day. I'm only a little bit. I'm gonna you go. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'm only a little bit. I'm only a little bit. I'm only a little bit. Okay, so I'm not okay. Okay, so I'm still you know, I'm not. Yeah, I'm leaving. Okay, I'm a woman. I'm the baby. I'm the really you got to
Um. You give the address to the coordinator of where they are. They came to Anam and we drove them away. We have driven them away from four locations in the Boing, from five in Enugu. And we shall continue to do so. Tell us where they are and we'll move them out. As simple as that. We've been doing it now. We've lost men. That is the uncelebrated war that is going on, which IPOB is fighting on your behalf. And some is inviting in their world. I put you can I gather all the Give us the address. They say about they will leave. We know what to do. We know what to do. Do we have any caller on the phone? The caller on the phone, can you hear me? Hello? Nothing is coming through. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please. Your name and where you're calling from?
Hello?
I can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
People want to hear.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening. Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, sometimes there's a delay. Go ahead.
My name is, I, I, I hope that you can hear me. My name is I'm calling from Germany. Yes, it's my pleasure to do that. I, I can call it humble. I create one family. All one suggestion. Many understand just not to waste your time. My whole suggestion was nine. I need, I need I wouldn't know. They got water. They got a man that meant. So we want to to fight for Biafra or we not alliance with Israel. Israel government. I wouldn't be known to Germany or another place like Italy. They had the interest. And what do eh Israel? I go to some training. I'm a fan of this, this training. I wouldn't buga. I'm not sure. I can every decade. Every I'm a fan. I wouldn't believe me. It's training for two, two days. No, I didn't. It's training for three months. I'm a good I'm a fan because now my name you I'm I'm a fan. They just take my fatherland. If you let me to I'm going to I wouldn't or I wouldn't Israel government. And he, he, he said I only had you know, with Israel government. I, I mean, I want. I beg you to be I'm a fan. We could I'm I'm a fan. I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a I'm a I wouldn't know. I got it. I'm not I'm 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 I wouldn't can I I I I I'm I'm a fan. Everybody will take back a catch. I love her once and for all. I'm a fan. So much with my contribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, my dear brother. Uche, I need to turn the line off. Thank you very much. Did you all hear what he said? Did you hear him? He's one of the best calls I've had in, in, in years. He understands the urgency of the situation. Our dear brother here, maybe when I was telling them that the Fulanis are coming to take our land, they didn't believe me. He's a living witness. His village is gone. Our brother who is calling this village to go as well. So he will fight Brata himself. Let me tell you why we must be prepared before we march. If we start anything today, they will go to the nearest village and raise it to the ground. Did you see what they did in, in Bayosa? Was it Bayosa they did that thing? Because they are cowards. They don't know how to fight. They specialize in any day we march unprepared. Before we march, we must make sure we can defend every inch and every territory of our land. Anywhere you live, they'll go there and bomb the village and kill everybody to demoralize you. That's how they are. And if that doesn't work, they'll kill our people in the north. That's what they do. I know them very well. So we must be prepared. And don't think that because the US want to announce everything we do or to make it public. No, we are doing many things, I assure you. We'll get don't worry about that. Thank you very much, my dear brother. Some of you will be here. We'll fight for you in the village. You don't worry about that. But support what we are doing. And don't, don't invite any one to do it. That's all we're saying. We will fight to defend your villages. Don't worry. Tell me where the problem is in Oka. Get me Miller. We've been doing it, so you don't know. So you think that Fulanis not in our land killing anyhow because eh, eh, because of miracle? Is that what you think? Is that what you think? Do you know how many rebels they have killed? Say something, something. Are you aware of that? Why have they not done it in Biafra land? Because so it matters. Without IPOB, a crew back home. A crew Yes, please, go ahead. The, can you hear me? Is he there or she? They, they call on the phone. Can you hear me? Now, answer the call. Can you hear me? The caller on the phone, can you hear me?
Oh, leader.
Yes, please. Your name and where you're calling from?
Is Emiko Biora. I'm from Abon province.
Yes.
So I have a question for you. I want to know if you will or you're considering to open the same Biafra aid that you opened in America here in Europe. I reside in Cologne and I would like to participate. Even though I'm in our unit here and I pay my dues too. But I want also the same aid you, Biafra aid you opened in America to do the same here in Europe. Because we have some other friends from Biafra here in Europe who also like to contribute.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. We'll try and see what we can do. But you know that freedom fighting is a very expensive business. Are you aware of that? Expensive. The cheapest consultants in the world to do any work for you will cost you over a million dollars a year. Eighty-five thousand dollars every month. And without their services, you're not going anywhere. Do you know that? Have you tried to go to court before to go and argue your case yourself before a judge? You know what the judge will tell you? What will the judge tell you? Go and look for. Go and look for. Go and look for. So you don't know this lie international politics? Huh? For you to say Angela Merkel, a German political consultant will take you to her. Or else you write email and they put it in in spam folder. It's a very expensive business. Very costly. And our brother said a very good thing that we should open up the same Biafra aid foundation here. I want to most of my I came here in America. Huh? Uh. I'm four point four trillion. Give me your name. Only two thousand dollars. Please, next call. The caller on the phone, can you hear me? The caller on the phone, can you hear me?
Thank you. Thank you. Call to a call to a.
You, you don't know if Fulanis have come where he is. The caller on the phone, can you hear me? The caller on the phone, can you hear me? There's a problem with the phones. Can you hear me? The caller on the phone?
Hello?
Yes, please. Raise your voice, your name and where you're calling from.
Hello?
Yes, please. Your name and where you're calling from? Yes, I can hear you.
Hello?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
They are, they are waiting for their voice to come across the radio.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I can, I can. But you can hear us. I don't think it's from here. I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Ah. And God is the The, the next person, please. How does this phone actually work? Can you hear me? The caller on the phone? Can you hear me? The caller on the phone? Anyone there? There's somebody there, but I think there's a problem. Please turn off the, um, the calls. I'll make something, um, public. That will be on Monday. There is a woman at the Zuhai Commission in Accra recruiting Fulanis across West Africa and shipping them to the zoo. I have her picture and the pictures of those that are moving down to our land. And in case you don't know, they have also told they are women with children to reside in Biafra land. So they have come to stay. They won't happen in Oka South. It's a settlement. Is that correct? It's a settlement. They have come to stay there, isn't it? So as we are looking for visa to go abroad, there ain't anything I want to come down to where we are. As I told you before, the same thing that happened to the Jews. Because nature abhors vacuum. The more you leave your land to come out, the more the Fulanis will come to occupy it. And they're coming from all over West Africa. And we're in serious trouble. The caller on the phone, can you hear me? The caller on the phone, can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, eh, what, eh, what I still want to add, I have called before and what I still want to add, you can help me to tell you. Understand, because eh, the more, the more I I need with this struggle of a team. Going ago, I wouldn't do when it is the government or we anyway is the government. I'm not what is required. I matter what is required, she can make it officially. I had to go and prepare. I wouldn't I want up to one million people that they will support in this. Understand, I will holla the standard support from Israel. When it comes from US, we are ready to march. Understand, when, when, when cross it's like a cross or desert. Cross on me. I, I see I am this is I have to I, I'm ready to even have the only thing I have. I think it is the, the financial support I am at here. Because the more women Fulanin he wants we go on here and contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. He keeps saying what needs to be done. There is no millionaire supporting what we are doing. Are you people aware of what is happening in Libya? Are you aware of what is happening in Libya? Do you know who is supporting them? The rebels in Libya? It's, um, the government of Bahrain. Do you know who is financing every other liberation movement you can think of? There are countries financing them. But you are the ones financed. All these things we've accomplished is you financing IPOB and the grace of the Most High. There is no millionaire. None supporting us. Not a single soul. What we need to prosecute this very liberation struggle and succeed is not much. But at the rate of the money you're contributing now, it will take us approximately twenty-eight years to raise that level of funding. You don't have it. And some of you are not charitable enough to give. You don't have it in you. It's not in our nature. I was telling some people the other day that we built Imostate Airport. You know Imostate Airport? We built it. I don't know how old some of you are here, but I paid ten naira survival levy. My parents gave me the money and I paid and I was given a receipt. Some of you here may have paid as well. Did you, any of you here pay survival levy? Imostate? Our mine was ten naira. I think maybe some traders paid fifteen naira. I don't know. We built Imostate Airport. Launching after launching after launching. That was when I knew that we, we had, we had no millionaires in Iwo Land. Mbakwe did launching in every, every major town. Yet we did not raise enough money to build Imostate Airport. Then they taxed everybody, including secondary school students. Ten, ten naira and we paid. You people are not generous by nature. I'm 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 You don't have it in you. A Fulani millionaire can give Boko Haram twenty million dollars. Continue what you're doing. Have you anybody called Boko Haram miscreants? Or call them names? Not one single soul. Instead, when they raped their mom, the mom will come back home, suffer from a disease and die. And eh, he will bury her in Homer Jeep. And buy six cows to bury her with. That's what happens. So it's not in you. I, I don't blame anybody. It's in our nature not to give. Why do you think would you go bought arms with his father's money? Nobody gave him anything. Even though they gave their money to go and buy arms, some ran away with it, some bought fake arms. And when those guns and bullets ran out, we lost the war. So you don't know? Do you want us to fail again? Do you want us to fail again? So my name will go down in the history books. Sunam the Kano also tried and failed. God forbid. So I want to be prepared. So I'm the bill is not much. Yes, it's not that much if you consider it. But it's because we don't have any millionaire. To be honest with you, we don't. Happy hand. It's just mad. Even if they do, they don't have the spirit to give. And that's why we are suffering. And I come that if there is one single millionaire from Biafra land and Biafra will not come within a matter of weeks. Huh? We have gone very far. Papa is talking about Israel. Just, um, little help and then they're gone. Is anybody on the line? Please go ahead. The caller messenger, go ahead, please. Yes.
All, all here, Biafra.
All here, Biafra.
Um, I'm from here's my phone number. I'm calling from Moscow.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is it, uh, my question is about finance. Um, levies. I would like to know if it is proper for a member of IPOB to collect levy on behalf of the family and create a corporate money for the various headquarters. Would that prove to ascertain that ten million have been actually sent to a headquarters? I have raised this so many occasions. Nobody was able to answer me. So I like to use opportunity to ask you directly to help and clarify this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Somebody collected money on behalf of IPOB. Do you hear that? Some Somebody collected money in Russia and did not send the money to IPOB. Did you, did you get any money from Russia? No, you got the money. That's what we are seeing. And tomorrow he or she will say the hardcore. Nobody is allowed to collect money from anybody. Just pay your dues only. That's all. Your contribution. And I must commend those of you. I believe this is the hardcore in, in Nombor. Is that correct? Everything, anytime you see IPOB, we are begging IPOB, this is, it's you, it's what you're doing. It's you that is doing it, nobody else. That's that's what we are using to do what we are doing. Don't collect money from Mr. B or Mr. F on behalf of IPOB. No. Direct them where, where to go to or to your financial secretary. That's how to do it. Don't collect on from anybody. Because what we do is because you have contributed, you have contributed. You think that every other person You think that every other person shouting Biafra, Biafra have also contributed, is that not true? Uh? Uh, I'll go easy, Bob. My card here, mama. It's just very few of you who are paying. I think Germany was number one before. Where are they now, is it number three or four? No, but they're no longer number one. No, no, they're, no, no, they're not. And do you know why you're no longer number one? Do you know why? In my mind, I mean. I can, I can get to uno, si, uno, na, vale. No, no, we're number one. Eh? Oh, no, I like the guy, he don't know the heads. That's what happened. And today Germany is no longer number one, before you were the highest contributors to IPOB worldwide. And I wish you can go back to being that once again. You know. Please, that that is where we are full of pride. Only make a great god. Nobody feeds us. We do what we are doing, IPOB funds itself. The same thing that we are doing every other freedom fighting outfit in the world. Governments sponsor them. Go and ask. In the history of the zoo, when you many go hear my before, IPOB? Has anyone done it before? It's from your contributions. Germany, UK, is that, UK is number two, isn't it? Who is number three? It, that it in there, man, here. Number three. Italy contributes more money than USA, can you believe that? Yes. Italy. I must commend Iran, Michael Iran, he did very well. Iran, the real one, Michael Iran, that did work in in Italy. Very fine job. Set up a family everywhere in Italy, I said everywhere in Italy. That's why they're, they are number three in the world. But all the rich, rich countries that like Canada and America. Because. For us, things are always in reverse. All the only one, China, my ass, it go, the only one, mama. But if it's a black person, once you are there, your children are wearing socks and sandals to go to school, other people can go to school. Barefooted is not your business anymore. But I'm grateful to Germany, at at least Germany is a civilized country. Where people go to work. And they are number one in the world, when I remember it, that's what gives me hope. Do you think that sometimes I don't feel bad? About our condition? Some of you have fun, I don't. I'm not with my family. So that tells you what we, I want Biafra to come today, tomorrow. So I can settle at least. Before I die. So I I don't, some of you don't appreciate the pain that goes into what we are doing. It's a very perfect process, I assure you. There is no fun in it. I'm a little, you see, Germany, I beg of you, please. There are calls. So who's on the line, please, your name and where you're calling from? Yes, please go ahead.
Are you hearing me?
I can hear you loud and clear, your voice will come through later, please go ahead.
So I I I have a little contribution concerning, uh my name is Alex and I'm from Data State. So I have a, I have a little contribution concerning this issue.
Yes, go ahead.
Because uh. The issue of the Biafra involves everybody, you know, so at least uh, I don't know, my opinion can be right, you know? Because anything from the the zoo called Nigeria. It must be taken by force. Because doing it uh 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 in a peaceful way like this, I don't think it will work. So I believe that Mazunadi Kano is uh is cantable. And I believe with with his power, we, he can do something that can make. Things possible. And for me, from my own opinion, I think uh. Making a good relationship like one of the international country like Russia. Will be more better for me to have that liberation quickly. Without zoo, it will be very difficult, I need Mazunadi Kano to look into it. That is my contribution, because we need this Biafra now, not. Anytime, yes, it must be now.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, that's my contribution.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm coming from Germany, yeah.
From Germany, okay.
I, I'll, I'm, I'm not, I'm a part of IPOB, but. The thing is that I, I, yeah, I live, I don't see any group or any people that is, you know. Who did this meeting and all those things for me, because I don't, I don't know the side that two people have right now. Whether in uh, because that time I watched it from there, they are. I'm living, I'm living under Christ effort in northern Westphalen. Do you know that area?
Westphalen, I've heard about it before. Is it Dusseldorf?
In northern Westphalen, northern Westphalen, in, it's uh, people afford.
Okay. Okay, we'll try and get his number, we'll try and get a national coordinator.
Believe it also.
We'll get a national coordinator to try and link him up with our people there, so they can start a family. Somebody will call him. Yeah. Now, this.
Yeah, my name is. My name is Alex.
Yes.
Uh, I'm from Data State.
Somebody will contact you, somebody will contact you, don't worry about that. Somebody will contact you, okay, Uche.
Hello?
Yeah. Someone will say something here, he's, he's, he's one of us and he wants, I like the desperation in our first now. As I said, when the time comes. Everybody will be looking for IPOB to try and do something. And that time has come. Uh, come in here, you go and I can join you. We need funds and but it's not funds that you can bring together, it's not possible. You know, do you know how much one attack helicopter gunship costs? Uh? Uh, no, you don't write an agreement, you have to show seriousness. Freedom fighting is like. Any other business. The person you're going to to sponsor you. Is like a bank. And the bank manager will ask you, you want to do business of two hundred euros? How much one do you have there with you? Isn't it? They're asking us how much we have, if we can buy, listen. If you buy, if you go to a company. And they show interest, they want to help you. You can buy equipments, what say fifty million dollars? And somebody will earn the right one for two hundred million, so you carry for two hundred million. You pay fifty million, when you finish the war and your society, you pay them back, that's how it's done. You don't go empty handed and be saying, try and help me, that means I'm serious. And as I said earlier. When it comes to international diplomacy. The same level of consultancy we have in Israel, in America, we must have it in Germany also. Do you know that? Everywhere you must have it, and the zoo, they have our money. And anywhere we go to. Our consultants in America, I went to them, held a meeting with them, I didn't want to tell any of you. Somebody from, when they said to make inquiries. Nigerian government offered them to me the month. The same thing they did to Atikabaka, do you know that? Yeah, you don't know. When I'm in here, I'm now. Atikabaka hired consultants from the US. The zoo went there and doubled the pay. And asked them to represent them as well. And that's the end of it. But uh we are lucky that we have men who are honorable, that love Biafra genuinely. And willing to work to make sure that Biafra comes. So they turned them down and said no to them. And what saved us was because I warned them that the zoo would come to them. I warned them that the zoo would come, and they did. So uh of course they did, uh that is, that is the type, people don't know the battle and the wars we're fighting every blessed day. We are just like, you know, a duck in a pond. If ever a bubble on a little main up, but uh. You think he's moving very serenely, there's no problem, but if you go under, the. He's busy, paddling along. Who's on the line?
Okay, oh. Uh, which am I for, good evening from here. Uh, I'm a big comment, we should be better than a good evening for here, my new theory man, so careful in the city, I'm calling for words upon right now.
Thank you.
Originally, there's a sweet in. I have my question to our members and you. One, one.
Go ahead.
My questions are these. Uh, please. The number one question I want to ask you, issue of command and control. I'm only pleading with the leadership of IPOB. Especially, I'm a big care, are you, what am I, which am I for? To see if there is any other way you can regulate it. Or better see, change it to obey and command, because. A lot of people are hanging on that command and control. And doing what they are not supposed to do. Second question is about this our struggle. Our men are dead, our boys are being killed in Biafra land. And if I could remember vividly. Uh, people of Amazonia, we were on top of them before, but now where are we? And another complaint I have here is this. I would suggest, I I wish. That the leadership of IPOB can form something like a defattal government. Could to help us enough in this struggle. And uh.
Yes, yes, go ahead, we are listening, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, Uche, talk to him, please.
The zoo, that wishes. Uh, hello?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Yeah, my brother, like I said. I am pleading that. If the leadership of IPOB. Could afford that opportunity. To create avenues. Because we have a lot of people who are willing. To come up with us. And do something for about this our struggle. Because like always say, ekron ek. If there's anything the leadership of IPOB can do. To at least give a hand, a free hand. To some people, some hard cause. In this struggle, because these are our people being killed, we are not happy. And if there is any other way, if there is any other way possibly. We can help. My, I under my charts, we have been calling and calling and calling, but we are not getting through. And there are a lot of wranglers in Biafra land. Please, we want to, the leadership of IPOB, please. To make sure that all these wranglers here and there are being checked made. And because this struggle, our boys are being killed, our men are being killed. This is my text, this is even, let's call Cabra, give us wisdom. Put it all of you, give all of you good heads. So we can be able to go back to where we belong. We are tired of this euro, we want to go home.
Thank you.
Cabra, bless you.
Thank you. You talked about how to command and control. Command and control is key. Without discipline, we would have fallen to pieces by now. There has to be discipline, that's number one, and number two. He said that Brazilians have overtaken us. Yes. Nobody is allowed to misuse it. Nobody is allowed to misuse it. Command and control simply means being able to obey. Your superior, that's all. Not when they are committing a crime, you can do it, no, that's what we're saying. You report them, they commit any crime. That's what we're saying. And nobody is ahead of us. Do you know how many years we've been active, IPOB, under my leadership? Uh, how many years? Two thousand and twelve, we started broadcasting. That's Radio Biafra. IPOB was not constituted formally. Until when? Two thousand. So it was. It was two thousand and thirteen, we started. Two thousand and thirteen, we started. Fourteen, fifteen, I was arrested, is that not correct? For two years. Is that not correct? Should I say for three years, because I was incommunicado. For a year, is that not correct? That's just two thousand and and um five, two thousand and five, I was arrested. If I'm not mistaken, yeah, two thousand and five, I was arrested. So that tells you, we've only been active. With my leadership of IPOB for less than four years. Active, less than four years. And look at where we are today. Is there any office you go into, any foreign ministry you will go into on this air that don't know about IPOB and what we are doing? Uh? We want to be prepared now, we will march, but we need to be prepared and fortified, so we don't fail, that's all. And discipline will help us get there. And Uche. Please, we have to take uh people from here and then, I'm sure the time they paid for the hall is coming to an end, is that correct? Is that what I said? Are you, are you sure? Uh, ha, 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 oh, yeah, somebody here wants to say something, then. Yeah, 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 please, go ahead. Thank you, thank you. Come closer, please. And why is it not, why, why can't we hear it through the speaker? Go ahead, yes. You say, it will. That's true. Thank you, thank, thank you for that. Um, I am very grateful for the question. And um. As you say, the call to advise IPOB in Numburg. As you said, it is the consistency that matters. Nobody is as consistent as IPOB is. I said nobody is. Not as we are. In, in the Bible. And also in real life, even today in Israel. They remember those that defended Jerusalem. Do you know that? That is the same way. By being in IPOB, you are immortalizing yourself, your name and your family forever and ever. Because there will come a time. That little children will go to school. And they will ask them, was your dad a part of IPOB? Or your mom? Because in Israel, there are two people, the Haganah and the Aegon, these are the people that fought for independence, that is the Labour and the Liquid Party in Israel. And if you don't belong to any of them. You are nobody. Until you have fought for Israel, you can open a petrol station in Israel. You don't know that, filling station, you cannot. You must have fought for your country first. Some of you see what you're doing as um, as a child play, no, it's not. That is why you must intensify your effort. To make sure that Biafra comes. And then when it comes, you see how people will look at you. You see how they will regard you. Then you know how important you are. Because nobody can come out and say, oh, it's because of my money, I gave it to them. We say it's because of IPOB and the grace of Elohim. That's why we are, who we are today. So I ask you to try and redouble your effort. And don't invite the likes of whom to come here. Because you're insulting the memory of the dead. That's what you're doing. You can't bring somebody here who said he was about to add Biafra, and yet you want Biafra. It doesn't make any sense at all to me. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm Bifany.
From Italy, go ahead.
Hello, sir, can you hear me?
They call on the phone, can you hear me?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
My name...
Go ahead.
My name is Yefedrich Sukul. Okay, I'm calling from Netherlands.
Netherlands, go ahead.
May God bless and protect you anywhere you are going in the mighty name of Yahweh. Our Amadika, my, I'm happy to hear your voice since you come out from prison.
Thank you.
May Elohim that bring you out will carry you, raise the flag of Biafra in Yahweh's name, my prayer.
You say?
My first time of communicating with you on radio. I'm hearing about you and I'm happy to talk to you tonight. All I want to say is this. Every contribution everybody is making is very, very good. But to you, God has to do to bring a solution to the end until we get Biafra. Continue. Let my own, my own even I have I want to have Biafra, Biafra. I don't need any of them. I don't want to have any, I don't want to have any. I want to, I want to, okay, it's bad. I don't want, I don't want to. We are Bia, no? They, they will make. I don't want. So you can call for me, dear, come to send them a card, to give Biafra, give me, me, me. I can, I, I do go, maybe fifty years, but I don't want to do that. Man, I want, I want to get some, yeah.
You say? You say?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, my dear brother. Thank you. Thank you very much. Some people are very, very, are highly upset, very upset. Do we have those that want to ask questions here? I thank you, my dear brother. Thank you very much for calling. And your advice is well taken. Please, go ahead.
All of you, all of you. My name is Tere, today. My question is, how can we stop like old laws from happening? What is really happening? I was in Nigeria last year. I was asked from, um, from Africa to, uh, they say I struck. But do I do talk to them, and they remind me that I can do it? And they was saying, they were trying to keep me in the, in the, and I told them, please, don't take me to special or anywhere. I did don't, I did not do that. I'm not having one thing here. So if you want me to give you money to beg us off, most of the banks, I can come on it. I'm giving to you guys, so you can, now you can use my, you can use it. And this is like, uh, really crazy. I don't see a reason why they would cost, have to take money from individuals, something like that. And I, I want to ask why it's like that, and I'm like a thought.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I am very, very saddened because of experience. That's, that's what some of us pass through each time we go home. Because the Fulanesi are in control, they are empowered. They can do whatever they like. But the worst part of it is that the governors that they rigged into power like Okesee, Bazoo have actually empowered these people to continue with this impunity in our land, because they see us as a conquer people. That is what Ohanese and the Ibo governors brought to us. I won't, I won't tell you how we are going to do it. But they know they are going to find it very hard soon. And somebody commented a while ago and said, um, what are we doing? There are some operational details I cannot divulge live on air. But what is happening in Yoruba land is not happening in Biafra land, though they are trying. It is not happening because of IPOB and what we are doing. I can not get into the weba. I cannot go into more details than that. We are stopping them from doing what they are doing. Huh? We are stopping them. Thank you very much. The next person, please.
I don't actually know, uh, what's the most important thing I have for a brother operation who called me this evening and told me that our leader would be in Nuremberg. Everything possible to be here tonight. So it is a pleasure and I'm very, very happy to be on this right now. So this moment, I believe that IPOB will be hearing my voice right now. Because I assure them one thing. I tell them that I want to work for Biafra. And I want everything from my effort to be straight. So I started from my house. I used my flat to set up IPOB in this world. So I'm having some challenges and I believe that this is an opportunity for me now to show myself and to also ask opportunity to meet. Mas'ing, I'm gonna be here maybe after the meeting or any time also because I have some private um, ways, not that I can ask, uh, don't need to ask on there. So I will also use this opportunity to, oh! That is who receives me when I have a workshop. So when they come here, they always see me listening to Radio Biafra. What are they wanting? Are you one of them? Then I reply him, are you not a Biafra? Don't you understand the meaning of IPOB? Why are you asking me, are you one of them? They do, are you? So please, all the things that we are suffering, suffering is not over. Everybody is going to his baby. And we need to start. We need to start reporting. Every week you have to report. You have to report for this fight. Mas'ing, wake us up. And what we need to do, we need to make, not forget us. We have to give him all the support. Whether he will or not. So everybody has to be serious in his case, in his case. Not to talk here and talk and then you run away. No, we don't need this. We need to make. When I listen to Mas' he says that he don't need to restore Biafra, he only need to vote. One and maybe. And I called Mas'ing, I said, I, I showed my name and went, I said, I am one of these others, maybe. All I need, right information. If they say to me, we are doing for everything, I am out. I don't have to wait at the party to do what you call me or because what I'm doing is for my generation on the floor. So we need to wake up.
Thank you very much for that. Um, you will see me if you, you said, did you say Duisburg or? Is it, is it a functioning IPOB family or have you just started? Oh, just two months? Just, just get together? Is the national coordinator, are you aware of? Okay. But you need to know him then.
Yeah, I'm connecting, uh, somebody, uh,
That's him. Okay. It's a good thing you're doing, because I will keep saying to people, if there is no IPOB where you are, to start one. And that's what you've done. So you need to see him and then finalize a few things, yes? And then we'll arrange for us to meet, okay? Um, thank you very much. We will, for all of you who are here, we are going to have a meeting, a very brief meeting of of microphone, so we can have far more frank exchanges. Yeah? Then that's the best thing to do. So at this time, we're signing off for our listeners all over the world. And we pray that you could carry them and will keep and sustain each and every one of them, wherever they are around the world. And that we shall reconvene very soon. I don't know when. But we shall reconvene very soon. And until then, um, from here, it is good night, isn't it? Good night, all of them. Thank you very much.